Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a meeting to order. If you would please stand and join us in the invocation.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this evening, as you know, we will be celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow, and it seemed appropriate to have one of our own veterans give the invocation for this evening. And so I've asked George Landry, our Utilities Director, to do that. As a reminder, George served as an Army Sergeant, First Class, specializing in infantry, reconnaissance, and surveillance. He had a total of six overseas deployments that included Desert Shield, Desert Storm, as well as post-9/11 deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan. During his Army service, George earned multiple medals and commendations, including two Bronze Stars, a Purple Heart, the Army Commendation Award, the Joint Service Achievement Award, and the Humanitarian Award. Sergeant Landry.
Good evening. I am humbled for this opportunity to lead us in prayer to honor all veterans. Heavenly Father, in every age, you call on certain persons to defend the human family from evil. Since our founding as a nation conceived in liberty, countless men and women have stepped up to defend from aggressors our great country and many other countries. Today, we revere and thank all our veterans, those who rest in honored glory, those who still suffer from their wounds of war, and those who, with us, enjoy the blessings of living in the land of the free and the home of the brave. God, we are thankful for the selfless sacrifice of these veterans and their families. Help us to remember them, pray for them, and care for them. Please help heal our wounded veterans and their families through the power of your Holy Spirit. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, George.
Agreed.
Can y'all hear me out there? Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, I'm on, I'm live. Okay, again, thank you, George, and thank all the veterans for your service. We'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody here wishing to come forward and speak under public comment? If there is, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Good evening.
Richard Hayesley, 3600 North Milton Road, Fort Pierce, St. Lucie Village, Florida. I'm here tonight to thank you for considering our request to raise the indigent services from $500 to $750. Some of you may know it's been 12 to 15 years since we've approached you and asked for anything, and we've not done anything, but we've always honored to take care of those that are less needy. And there are a couple of funeral homes that still do that, and we're honored. And I'm just proud of everything here, and glad to be a member of the community, and just proud to be a native of Fort Pierce and St. Lucie County. Keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayesley, because I know that you do a lot for this community. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll come back to the board. I want to remind everybody to please silence yourselves, if you would please. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve October 6, 13, and October 20?
Go move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, did you get that? It's Commissioner Mitchell with Commissioner Bart, second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll move to proclamations. Madam Secretary, would you please recognize Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month?
A resolution proclaiming the month of November 2020 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Alzheimer's disease is a public health crisis. There are over 580,000 residents of Florida who have a neurocognitive disorder and who are among the most fragile and vulnerable to the effects of COVID-19. Over 1.15 million family caregivers in Florida provided over 1.3 billion hours of unpaid care to their senior family members who have a neurocognitive disorder. 9,442 families live in St. Lucie County who must cope with the disease process daily, as well as the threat of hurricanes and the flu. It is important that the safety and well-being of Alzheimer's families living in our local communities is preserved, as well as their dignity and quality of life, and that services and resources are accessible to all cultures. This Board extends its gratitude to those advocates and service providers, including Alzheimer's Community Care and the Alzheimer's Association Southeast Florida Chapter, who provide vital care and support, value the need for dementia-specific care, and support Alzheimer's families and a cure for Alzheimer's patients. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This Board does hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This Board urges the citizens of St. Lucie County to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and attend educational events that are free and open to the public during Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this 10th day of November 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second.
So, Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Hutchinson, Commissioner Zadowski, second. Did you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bart.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I believe we have Mary Barnes and Robert Gorman with the Alzheimer's Association. Would you like to come forward and say a few words? Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. Madam Chairman Townsend, Vice Chairman Zadowski, other honorable members of the County Commission, thank you. You'll notice I'm standing here by myself this evening. Because of the weather, Mary Barnes was not able to make it, and I understand that the Alzheimer's Association Southeast Chapter was not able to get a representative to attend this evening. However, as a longtime resident of St. Lucie County and the Chairman of the Board of Alzheimer's Community Care, I'm very pleased and proud to be here, and again, thank you for recognizing November 2020 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and also November 5 as Teal Day, which, as you know, is the international color for Alzheimer's. The Association and Alzheimer's Community Care work together with different purposes, different emphasis on it, but what that does assure is that services are available for our affected families. And it's estimated that there are 11,000 families in St. Lucie County alone that face not only Alzheimer's but related neurocognitive disorders, including Pick's Disease, Lewy Body, frontal lobe, and even vascular dementia. At present, all these individuals are at even greater risk due to the pandemic that we all have found greatly affecting our lives. I'm very pleased and proud to say that our 11 dementia-specific daycare centers on the Palm Beach, Martin-St. Lucie Counties have continued to be open, though with reduced numbers, and serving our clients. Even more importantly, over these past seven months, we have not had a single case in our centers among patients or staff because of the protocols we already had adopted in being commissioned under the joint commission and accredited on our services. We pledge that our families will be safe, secure, and cared for. One of the things is, we always like to hear of efficiencies, and I'm very pleased to say that with my most recent audit, for every dollar donated to Alzheimer's Community Care, 92 cents goes directly into services and resources. And we like to say that your funds go for a good purpose and not far away. All stays locally. I'm also very pleased to announce that we are beginning the planning stages of a ribbon-cutting of what will be our third services and dementia-specific daycare center here in St. Lucie County in a joint effort with Grace Lutheran Church in Port St. Lucie. We're hoping that we will have that event in mid-May of this year. Again, thank you very much for your continued support for vulnerable families and especially those afflicted with neurocognitive disorders.
Thank you. Commissioner Zadowski.
Mr. Gorman.
Yes, sir.
There are a lot of folks listening to you tonight, and if they wanted to get involved in support, sponsorship, donations, or help in some way volunteering, how would they do that?
The easiest thing is to go online to alzcare.org. That is our website, and there will be links to our services, to our daycare centers, to videos taken of some of our services and the individuals in them, as well as to donate and volunteer. We enjoy greatly having, and we rely a great deal on volunteers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know the Pilot Club does the bracelets with you as well, too.
Absolutely. Our bracelet program, again, community, involves our organization, the Sheriff's Department and the Pilot Club, and the Pilot Club just recently had an extremely successful golf tournament. Again, they've done it annually, and I believe that was the 15th year. We are also currently working with, I believe it's Safety Net, to have a new technology that will tie with the bracelets via a Bluetooth technology that will set up a perimeter against elopement beyond those areas.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sure that staff, while this reads, they'll have the phone number up there. They're very good about that. We have a proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please recognize the Seminole Tribe of Florida?
A resolution proclaiming the month of November 2020 as American Indian Heritage Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Native Americans and the indigenous peoples of North America have significantly influenced the history and culture of our great nation. The contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness that America continues to enjoy today. The customs and traditions of American Indians are respected and celebrated as part of the rich legacy of the United States. In 1924, Congress enacted the Indian Citizenship Act. In 1986, Congress passed the law, and President Ronald Reagan signed the proclamation authorizing American Indian Week. In 1990, President George H.W. Bush designated November as National American Indian Heritage Month. After 100 years of efforts to recognize American Indians, National American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month is celebrated to recognize native cultures and educate the public about the heritage, history, art, and traditions of American Indians and Alaska natives. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This Board does hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as American Indian Heritage Month in St. Lucie County, Florida. This Board urges the citizens of St. Lucie County to join us in honoring American Indian Heritage Month with community celebrations, as well as cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities that will take place across the state of Florida and in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this 10th day of November 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Zadowski, Commissioner Bart, second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, and Alexander Tommy did call the office. He has a cold, so he's not with us tonight, so we'll make sure that he gets his proclamation for the tribe. We'll just make sure he receives that, but thank you. Okay, there are no presentations. We'll move to consent agenda. Is there anybody wishing to pull something for comment or a separate vote? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Bart with Commissioner Hutchinson, second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll move to item nine, public hearings, 9A. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jennifer Hill, Office of Management and Budget Director. This public hearing is a resolution for the fiscal year 2019-2020 for a budget amendment. The fiscal year actually ended September 30, but before the county's books are closed, the budget needs to be amended by $4,993,711 to reconcile some actual fund balances in various funds, establish budgets for unanticipated revenue that came in throughout the year, and to move money between some of the county funds. And there were, there's a couple of funds that we're actually closing out as well. This public hearing was advertised on Thursday, November 5, and staff is requesting the Board approve the budget resolution amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you. Is there any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, come back to the board.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, it's Commissioner Bart, Commissioner Hutchinson, second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to item B.
For the record, I'm Cara Wood, a county planning consultant from Calvin Giordano Associates. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is item 9B1. This is Indrio and I-95 Development. This is a rezoning and preliminary planned town application. We're excited to bring this to you this evening. The staff has been working with this applicant for about a year and a half or so now. This is a new town on Indrio Road, so the applicant will go into all the details of their proposed application, but this is really exciting for us. It's the first large development being proposed in the TVC planning area. So what we'll be doing is just going through the formalities of the application and giving you a preliminary idea of what this is, and then the applicant will go through in greater detail. This, of course, is a public hearing, so there are three elements of public notice. There is the mail-out to individual property owners within 500 feet of the property. There was a sign placed on Johnston Road and Indrio Road, and there was an ad run in the newspaper. This is the aerial of the site. You can see I-95 and Indrio Road and the red outline of the compiled parcels, which total about 834 acres, and that's at the southeast quadrant of Indrio Road and I-95. As you can see, the future land use is entirely TVC, and you can see the hatchmark, boundaries of the property in question. And all the property in this area is also currently zoned agricultural one. The future land uses, of course, have lots of other density that is potential in this land area, and so this application is taking advantage of that underlying developable And the application, the applicant is proposing to rezone to planned town and village. So this shows a diagram of the preliminary regulating plan, just to give a general idea of the mix of uses. There are single and multifamily homes. There is a collection of retail and commercial uses, a 24-vehicle fueling station that's going to be located up near the corner of Indrio and I-95. There is a significant amount of open space. You can see along I-95 and on the southern border of the parcel, there's, all of that area is preserved as countryside, and there are parks and other open space amenities scattered throughout the development, as is required by the Towns, Villages, and Countryside regulations. The applicant is also dedicating a public school site and a fire station, and they are also including workforce housing and targeted industry. This is a zoom out of one portion of the site, so you can see a little bit more detail. So this plan, unlike some site plans that come before you that show all of the details of every lot type and every use, this plan, as consistent with the TVC regulations, shows the general layout of the streets and the organization of the neighborhoods, and the applicant will fill in the details of the site plans when they go through the final site plan approval stage. And so this is the southern portion of the parcel showing mostly the residential development. Since this is such a large application, again, it'll be a couple thousand residential units at least, the application will be phased in over four chunks, and you can see the colors and the differentiation of the hatchmarks that show the different phasing, and this will occur over about 25 years. You can see here are the boundaries of the individual parcels surrounding the subject property and the 500-foot notification radius. So these are the parcels that got the mail notice, and 18 notices were mailed to this 500-foot radius, and so far, staff has not received any notices of opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their July 16, 2020, meeting forwarded a recommendation of approval for the proposed rezoning and preliminary site plan to the Board of County Commissioners. And staff also recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the subject application. We find that it is consistent with the applications for zoning found in sections 110603 and 110207 of the St. Lucie Land Development Code, and the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval.
Excuse me. Okay, she's almost there, but Madam Chair, could we have somebody check her mic?
I was gonna say, yeah, I have a hard time hearing you two.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me know. It's a little bit better if I scoot closer.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, we could hear you, but it was, I could hear what you were saying, but it was...
Well, it's also probably not picking up in the recording.
I was struggling.
You can't hear me very well. Thanks for letting me know. So staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020-248. We do want to point out specifically two conditions of approval that are in this application. Since obviously this is a large application, there will be associated transportation impacts, and the details of those will be fully fleshed out until the application goes through final site plan approval, which will be administrative. And so in order to address those transportation impacts, there needs to be an overall strategy. So the applicant will be coming back to the Board of County Commissioners with a proportionate share agreement and a development agreement to cover all of the infrastructure improvements that will be needed. So that will be also a public hearing, and so we do have one condition of approval that reads, "No development application shall be submitted for county review until the proportionate share agreement and development agreement has been approved by the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners." These agreements shall mitigate the cumulative impacts for the entire, I think that's supposed to say entirety, of the 834.43-acre development. So this is an important aspect, obviously, since this is a very general plan that you're looking at tonight. We, of course, need to make sure that those impacts are handled. So what this essentially indicates is that there will be no for the review of a final site plan, which the final site plan upon approval would give them the ability to go ahead and begin development. So those agreements need to be solidified before any further development review takes place. And then another condition is that within 30 days of this approval, the applicant shall record a unity of title encompassing all parcels. The purpose of this condition is to ensure that the development remains as a cohesive whole and that parts of the development don't get sold off to other developers, making it very difficult to track things like transfer of development rights and the responsibility for the proposed impacts. There are, of course, other standards of condition having to do with environmental land, conservation areas. Many of these are standard for site plans. We didn't feel the need to go through them specifically, but we thought we should point those out so that, to bring those to the commission's attention.
Thank you.
And with that, that includes my presentation, and the applicant is, again, here to make a more detailed presentation about their proposal, which includes the most exciting part, which is the pretty pictures of the fantastic place they're going to develop.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Yes, I always get to do the pretty pictures. Marcella Camblore, with Marcella Camblore and Associates, planner for Indrio I-95, for the record. With me here tonight are also Mr. Gustavo Lumer, who is the owner and developer, and our engineer of record, Sean McKenzie with McKenzie Engineering. Is this good for the mic? So I'm gonna try to skip over some of the slides that Cara has already shown you, just the general location in northern St. Lucie County, as you all are aware, but maybe some members of the public are not. This is a very unique portion of your comprehensive plan. It has rules that are very specific, that are tailored, and very clearly explain what development needs to look like, you know, the TVC area of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. The TVC area is a 60-square, I'm sorry, this jumps, roughly 60-square-mile area that is kind of straddling both sides of Indrio Road, almost half of it to the north, half of it to the side, south, and just west of I-95, and mostly goes east, almost to King's Highway to the east. This area is also, interestingly, some of it is inside the urban service boundary and some of it is outside the urban service boundary, but the TVC contemplated that because of the development pressures at the time that that was being envisioned by the community, that this entire overlay would affect how development happened regardless of where this urban service boundary was, so long as developments followed certain very strict procedures for development. You can see that in particularly the 834-acre site that we're looking at straddles a very unique location. This was a key location in the TVC. It was identified as a key downtown area for the northern St. Lucie County community. It was also identified as a key job creator area, too, which is why some of the numbers that are being proposed in this development are part of this new town. These are the diagrams in TVC. The orange shows the general town center area that was envisioned. The red shows the general, I don't know if this, does this have a pointer, probably not, the general job... The general job workplace plan, and all of those elements have been incorporated into this proposal. As I mentioned and you've heard, and some of you even participated in this, we had hundreds of residents, over 200 residents, participating in creating this vision. There were a total of 125 public meetings to get this vision created and then implemented through the creation of a new code and a new comprehensive plan element. And Commissioner Zavalski, you mentioned that this was an award-winning project. Yes, it received the Florida American Planning Association Award of Excellence for the planning and the planning process itself. It also received the Dry House Award for Form-Based Code. So today is a celebration, not just for Mr. Lumer, to be here. I think the planning community, this broke ground as far as form-based comprehensive plans, and a lot of people have, you know, over the years and through presentations, said, "Where's St. Lucie County's great plan? When is it coming to fruition?" And so there's a lot of eyes looking at what's happening here today outside of St. Lucie County as well, and we're very excited about that. So in a nutshell, the basic principle of development in towns or villages in the TVC is really to create mixed communities, to mix uses, to mix housing types, to mix people by age and by income, to create an authentic community. Before TVC, in this area, a lot of what we were seeing were just developments that, you know, kind of separated uses and separated the different types of development, and TVC essentially brings them together, mixes them up, creates a very walkable, very compact community. But a fundamental result of that is that a vast majority of the land is preserved as open space accessible to the public in perpetuity. TVC requires that if you're building outside the urban service boundary, you have to leave 60% of your land in open space and countryside. If you're inside, it's 40%. Because we're straddling of these 834 acres, a total of 56% will remain as countryside under the definition of TVC, open, public, and accessible in perpetuity. And the remainder will house 2,683 units, or up to 88,000 square feet of retail, again, consistent with what the COM plan required for this area, and up to a million square feet of targeted industry. Again, retail and jobs, the squashed plan. Hopefully, not all of them are coming out like this. If not, we can go back to yours, Kara. I don't know where, why it's turned. So one of the fundamental concepts of TVC, too, is to treat stormwater in a very unique way. It's great to create lakes that are isolated behind homes to create, you know, an amenity, something that adds value to the particular sale of a home. In the case of TVC, the stormwater is treated as a system, as a flowway system. It is stated in your comprehensive plan that the first project to come onboard is going to determine where that system is initiated. What Mr. Lumer has done is he's created a system in such a manner that it will be very easy to plug in to the north and to both the east and west, because in this case, the flowway appears sort of straddling on both sides of the development. This is not just a stormwater system, but a recreation system. It's gonna have trails. There's very specific requirements for how the shorelines need to be designed and planted, and so it's gonna create possibly the largest recreation, green recreation system in the area right now. So not only are we getting development, but we're getting this enormous parkway for everyone in the community. It's hard to tell -- I don't know if in your screens you're also seeing it squished. So it's a little hard to show. Let me get to some of the color images. Let's see if they're not. I think it has to do with the fact that it's a CAD. This is a little bit easier to see. So as I was mentioning, the two large, open-space countrysides sort of embracing bracketing development. So if you're driving even along Indrio or Johnston, for the most part, you're going to see green, and beyond that green, the town, all the green with that flowway and recreation amenity. What's important, too, as far as the program, is that -- I don't know why this is jumping. Okay. So this area that's outlined right here is an 18-acre site that is being set aside for a new school. No walkable community would be complete without being able to have our kids walk or bike or, you know, take some sort of other modern type of transportation, you know, their hoverboards to school. And we've been working for many years with the St. Lucie County School District. I think they're envisioning a K through eight, at least, in this location. There's also a dedication of two and a half acres for a new fire station. We've been working with your fire department on the placement and shape and location of this site. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure that I don't jump too fast. Right on the corner of Indrio and Johnston, again, consistent with the comprehensive plan, is where the proposed mixed-use downtown placemaking core of the community will be located. It is specifically located in this area so that it is something that opens up, again, to the entire community. This is not something embedded, private, or only for new residents of this town. It is intended to create a destination, not just for new residents, but for those in the area as well. Just a few images of what the TVC code requires that this area look like. As you can see, for the downtown, white sidewalks, particularly now so that there can be outdoor seating, apartments, condos, and offices above retail. The image to the bottom is a view from a large public green that is proposed at the intersection of Indrio and Johnston, a great location to have, you know, Fourth of July events or parades. Again, idea of creating place, of creating a unique identity, not just for this new town, but for future development, and particularly for the many residents that are in the area as well. Closer views of these outdoor cafes and greens and avenues that all converge into this very special community place. As you can see, the retail on the ground floor, restaurants, large white sidewalks. As you go into the community, into any of the residential neighborhoods, as I mentioned before, the idea is to have a mix of building types, from cottage lots to single-family sideyard lots, townhomes, all the way to larger state lots, all very closely located within greens and open space. I believe that the way that we have designed this project, there's not a single residential unit that is more than 1,000 feet from a park or actual countryside. So the ability to live in a very walkable, compact neighborhood and walk two or three blocks and being in the countryside or a park is going to just be incredibly unique to this development. So this is an example of an area that has one of those central greens, and this is an example of the homes that are on an edge road that are fronting the countryside. And as you can see, because of TVC and because of the ability to also do agriculture in TVC, there's the thought of bringing agrihoods, bringing food production close to where people are, and, you know, more and more people want to know where their food comes from. And so this is a great opportunity to continue with the, you know, the essence of this agricultural area and provide a service to the community as well. The TVC is very specific, too, as to what kind of crops you can have near the homes, and so the concept of agrihoods, which came -- was invented, I would say, long after TVC. I think TVC had thought of this and had not given it the cool name. But essentially, you had it in your books long before it became popular in planning. I just want to talk just for one second about the transportation network. So as Kara mentioned, staff is recommending approval because this plan is following TVC to the dot. Mr. Lumer paid for the extension of utilities along Indrio Road to I-95 long before he had submitted an application, and he entered into this partnership. I mean, he's been a true partner with the county. We're now moving forward into the final site plan phase, and we understand that we need to work on a developer's agreement, as Kara mentioned, to guarantee that, you know, the sites are dedicated, that the open space is preserved in perpetuity. And we have no doubt that, you know, you all have a pretty standard base for a developer's agreement, and we can add the elements easily because it all comes out of the plan, and we'll be working with your staff on that. So we're okay with that condition. But the language reads that no final site plan application will be submitted until there is in place a developer's agreement and a proportionate share agreement. The proportionate share agreement essentially says that when this development reaches a point that, you know, roadways fail, and there is a point, I think it's about the 2000th home, 11th year of construction, depending on how you see it, where this stretch of Indrio Road that you can see, it was specifically constrained by design at the time of doing the TVC, west, east of Emerson, between Emerson and Kings, that area was specifically left as a two-lane road by request of the community. The rest of it is a four-lane road. And then east of Kings, that road had to remain two lanes because of the canopy and historic elements that flank both sides of the road. So in order to do this, we have to enter in a proportionate share agreement where it will be you, the board, who decides, moving forward in 11 years or 15 years or whatever the home is, do you want to go back to the community and see if you widen, you know, this section of Indrio? Or do we want to work on an alternate, parallel road? The developer's responsibility is to pay his fair share of the impact of that road. That's what proportionate share is about. Now, because this is a road that involves the DOT, we are concerned that reaching the proportionate share agreement, including an agency outside the county, may be a process that's a little lengthier than just working with your staff. So our request is that you leave the language exactly as your staff is proposing it, but change the word "no plan shall be submitted" to "no plan shall be approved." We think that we can work with your staff on, you know, the hundreds of details that we're gonna have to work through of the plan, and if in that process, the developer's agreement or, most importantly, the proportionate share agreement is not ready, we'll sit until that's ready. But we don't want to, you know, nobody can tell us that that process is gonna be two or three months, and if it just becomes seven or eight, you know, we want to bring the development application along and have it hold until that is approved. And again, simply because what's mostly triggering this proportionate share or this failure was by design by the TVC through a specific request of the community to maintain a road narrow. So with that, I think I'm happy to answer any questions, and I apologize for some of the images being squished. We'll figure this out for the next time.
Okay, so Kara, are you okay with the language she's wanting to change?
Madam Chair, I believe that works. I think that the applicant's concern about the length of time for the review and approval of the proportionate share agreement is valid, and again, those things are also public hearings, so notice takes time. And in reality, the details, review of the details of the final site plans will take time, as long as, you know, as long as this process took, this was fairly conceptual. So the final site plan is really where, you know, where we have to go through everything with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that the details of their plans match up to the very detailed requirements of the TVC Land Development Code. So obviously, I would leave that to your, you know, to your planning director to make that final determination, but I don't see -- I certainly see the reasonableness of the applicant's request to --
Okay, thank you. And before we do anything else, Jody, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Madam Chair, no.
I just want to offer. Does the board have any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I think that the future will drive that message in a neighborhood. I think that the neighbors actually may push forward to change that dynamic in the future as we see things get constrained and so on. The other is the stormwater process by which you're creating a series of cascading stormwater treatment areas. I have been asking for some time now to, we begin to take a look at our comprehensive plan to include those types of elements to increase the amount of water storage and treatment on-site, and sometime down the road, maybe even be able to incentivize, because the amount of stormwater we're seeing in the system and what we're seeing right now coming down around us is incredible. So we're gonna have to start figuring out, from a systemic standpoint, what we're gonna do with water in developments so as to not, you know, flood downstream. We've got a lot of green space, and I think we can incentivize down the road how to deal with stormwater. So I'm very grateful that this is being thought outside the box and looking to create this process.
You know, kudos to your staff because they pushed -- so this land has a lot of canals that cut through that are Ford Pierce Farms' canals, and so they really pushed our team to work with Ford Pierce Farms and as much as we could. And if you look closely, you will see that those east-west canals have the edges that have been softened. We can't clean everything that's coming from out west, but this is, you know, at the cost of the developer, a way to put water that has nothing to do, it's not part of this development at all, it's part of everything that's happening out west that will end up cleaner into the lagoon. And I think that's also gonna require some structures and things, you know, you can explain the details of that. But your staff pushed and Mr. Lumer that --
And I think this is gonna be a stalwart opportunity for the rest of the development community to buy in and see how this can work. So thank you very much for that vision, and thank you to our staff.
Thank you.
Yep. It's exciting. So if there's no more questions, I'm gonna open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to come forward and speak? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Craig Bridges with the Crossing Community Church, 8103 Indrio Road. Chairman Townsend, congratulations to Commissioner Bartz and Zavalski for Ann Townsend for your reelection. That canvassing board was an interesting life for me. I'm excited about the development and those things that are happening. As a pastor, that gives me insight to what's coming our direction so we can be better prepared for perhaps people who would want to attend our church. As I've been before you previously in the year, my concern is that stretch of road there between Emerson East to actually Seminole Road and going east into the four lane. While it's beautiful, we love what's been done, but as being a community church, it's creating an issue for us somewhat now. It's gonna become greater with the new developments that are happening. We have 7-Eleven going in at the northeast, northwest corner, okay? We have 7-Eleven going in at the northeast, northwest corner, okay? Then we have some future development, I've heard, there, and then this wonderful location. We have five of seven nights, we have AA meetings. Monday nights, we open to the community anywhere in the county, mental health with therapists. We offer on Tuesday nights, two special needs classes, scout groups. By the first of the year, I'll be coming to the planning and zoning department for temporary conditional use for a special needs school that's going to be on our property using our facilities. We already had the neighbor to our west has allowed us to put a fence in to come out his driveway for our people going west, so the other driveway, they can go east. You have no lighting along that road of 614 Indrio, there's no sidewalks, and it comes off of that. If I'm correct, and maybe I've just heard something, the TVC was to control speed and to encourage alternative routes, okay? I don't know where they're going, not Emerson, not Johnson, not Fort Pierce Boulevard. So I don't know where they're going. We need to address that at the same time, that stretch of land. It costs us almost $200 a month for DEP to come in and inspect our water, which we can't drink, we have no county water lines. So I just want to express my pleasure of this, but that's an issue, I think, as a pastor in that area, and I'm not sure what community people wanted kept that way. I have not heard of any personally. I've been there 20 years. So I'd really like to see that addressed. It's really a concern. It's just going to get worse, okay? So thank you all very much. I'm excited for what you do.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? And Mr. Bridges, if you want to also, I'm sure Mr. West and some of the other people in that area would sit down and have a conversation with you also to go over some of the direction of the road and stuff as well. It might be a good conversation for you to have with them. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, we'll come back to the board.
Madam Chair, I believe this is a clause I judicial, and we're going to disclose, so before we start conversation, can we do that?
We can.
At this point, I'll disclose that I've only talked to staff and the applicant and his representatives.
Is there anybody else? I have had no conversation except basic staff. Anybody else?
Just staff.
Madam Chair, I've spoken with staff, Marcella Campbell, Ms. Wood, and the applicant.
Mr. Morris. Thank you. Do you have questions?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody have a question, concern, comment? We're all being awful quiet this evening.
How about a motion to approve?
I was going to say it, then if nobody has anything, Commissioner Zadowski, do you want to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, that's with the amended language.
With the amended language, yes.
Yeah.
Requested by the applicant.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, Commissioner Bartz made the motion, Commissioner Zadowski, I mean Commissioner Zadowski made the motion, Commissioner Bartz seconded, and that is with the language changes per the plan, or would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. It's exciting to see that it's coming. We will move to item two.
This is the wrong item. This is the text amendment to the Land Development Code.
Can you hear me?
Better.
Barely. Okay.
There you go, that's better.
Little height issues. For the record, my name is Jody Metwick with the Planning and Development Services Department. I am here tonight to present the County Initiative Land Development Code text amendment to define, allow, and establish design standards for changeable message monument signs. The public notice was advertised in the county, in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on October As you recall, at the June 12th, 2019, the planning commission held a public workshop to explore the pros and cons for changeable message signs. The commission was generally supportive of ending the current guidelines that would not negatively impact our business, community, or overall character of the surrounding properties. In our proposed ordinance, we did add some definition for a monument sign. The definition is a ground sign that is connected to the ground, or supported by a freestanding wall, pedestal, or any other structure. A monument sign must have any, must not have any exposed pole or pylon. The current regulations mandate a changeable sign area is, if larger than 30 square feet, shall remain static and change less than once every 24-hour period. Alternatively, the changeable message sign may be up to 30 square feet. The display shall be black background with a single color copy, shall not scroll, flash, or blink, and the message displayed copy shall not change more frequent than every five seconds. Again, this is an example of a current standard. The zoning districts eligible for a message, of changeable message sign is everything except for the agricultural districts and your residential. These are the highlights of the amendments that's on you tonight for your review. The electric message sign shall not exceed 30 square feet. The message display shall not scroll, flash, move, and change, must occur simultaneously for the entire sign phase. The message display content shall not change more frequently, not frequently, than every six seconds. The time to change completely from one display to another shall be a maximum of two seconds. The sign must be designed so that upon failure or malfunction, there is no flashing intermittent content or any other apparent movement. The changeable message sign may not direct the movement of vehicle or pedestrian traffic, may not obscure, obstruct, interfere with or imitate any official traffic sign or signal. Each display sign shall display an ambience light sensing device and stimmering ability that will adjust the brightness of the changeable sign. No such changeable message monument sign may be placed closer than 100 feet to the nearest boundary of any residentially zoned property, and if placed closer than 300 feet from such property boundary, must be situated that the sign is facing away from the residential zone property and is operated only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. This, except for billboards. All permitted changeable message signs shall be equipped with a sensor or other device as automatically determines the ambient lighting. This is just showing a comparable of what is existing, the current guidelines, with the back black, back black background, and with the proposed guidelines still maintaining the 30-square-feet requirement. This demonstrates a case study that we took one of the properties that is existing within St. Lucie County to demonstrate the 300-foot separation requirement from any residentially zoned property. This is a wawa located at the southwest corner of Prima Vista Boulevard and Floresta Drive. As you can see, around, the blue is indicating the surrounding residential neighborhood. The estimated buffer from any residential zone property is 100 feet. As you can see, this property would not meet that requirement. The yellow arrow indicates the property has to be within 300 feet from any residential zone. This arrow is from Celestial Court all the way to Prima Vista Boulevard, again, does not meet the separation requirement. The wawa is outlined in yellow, showing the 300-foot separation. And the green line, the green arrow, is indicating that the monument sign has to be placed away from the residential area facing that, facing the residential area. Again, this particular case, this wawa would not be allowed to have a changeable message sign based on our proposed amendments. That being said, some of these properties that are in a residentially zoned area, such as your churches, they could qualify, even though they do flank certain residential properties. One is the Grace Emmanuel on Kitterman Road that has an existing sign today. They are surrounded by residentially zoned properties. The one property is actually a residential community home, and the other property would never be impacted because of the heavily vegetated landscape buffer. So in this case, we provided a variance, an administrative variance process for certain properties that would still meet the requirements and the intent of the changeable message sign, but can demonstrate that they would not be a negative impact to their neighbors. So that being said, the administrative variance requires only 400 to 300-foot separation between your residential neighbors. The Planning and Zoning Service Director shall notify all the adjacent property owners. If no written objections, then the variance can be approved administratively. If one objection is received, it will be scheduled for the next Board of Adjustment The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their October 15, 2020, meeting, voted unanimously to recommend the proposed amendments, including an administrative variance process, in accordance with the procedures outlined in the Land Development Code, Section 10.01.01. After evaluating and having outside counsel assist the staff as well, staff recommends board authorization to schedule the second public hearing for the Land Development Code text amendments to Section 9.01.01, permitted permanent signs to allow changeable message monument signs within certain zoning districts.
Madam Chair, when I read through the package, do you have a date, as a recommended date, for when the second hearings to be held?
Yes, I do believe the December 1st meeting.
All right, it just wasn't on the agenda, that's why I was...
Right. It would either be, if we're going to do it in December, excuse me, it would be December 1st at 6:00 p.m., or December 15th at 9:00, whichever you believe is appropriate. So the December 1st would be the night meeting, the first meeting in December.
And it should be a night meeting, so that if there's people that work, so, and I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you've had the conversations with the church, and they're okay with this language, and this makes it so that what they have in existence, they will be able to use?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to know, is Blockbuster making a comeback?
There you go.
I just, I mean, because I know there's a lot of churches that have these, and they've not been able to use them appropriately, which is why we've had this conversation. And, you know, we have seen more of these pop up in the city, and they're fine, they're nice. So I just want to make sure that you've had that conversation with them, and this is going to, they are in agreement to this, and that they don't have to go back and take away or get rid of anything that they've already purchased from the church.
Madam Chair, that is correct. We have had conversations along with, with Mrs. Suzie Karen, she's been assisting us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, I'm sure that our crack staff went through and looked at Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie's sign information, so that we don't run into huge conflicts down the road, because it's confusing enough where you have, you know, unincorporated on one side of the street and city on the other. So that has been done, right? As best you can.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Zadowski, yes, we did do comparables through City of Fort Pierce and the City of Port St. Lucie. We are equivalent. Indian River County, we did look at their ordinance as well, as long as, in Martin County.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I think this is a public...
Oh, sorry, it's a public hearing, I forgot. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Well, we can move it to the second.
But...
It still requires a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to come forward? Seeing none, don't everybody jump, we're going to close it and come back to the board. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
To move it to December 1st.
To December 1st.
Right, second public hearing.
Thank you.
Is there, is that, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, Commissioner Mitchell with Commissioner Zadowski second, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bartz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, that concludes that. We'll move to the regular agenda, and we will begin with the Tourism CARES Act. Thank you, ladies. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Charlotte Byerly, Tourism Division. At the BOCC meeting, at the board meeting on October 20th, the board approved staff's request to enter into a contract with Madden Media to provide digital marketing services for the county's tourism division. Madden was selected as the highest-ranking firm under RFP 20-022. Today, staff is requesting that the board consider approval to enter into a separate contract with Madden Media using federal CARES Act funds in the amount of $213,997.93 to perform digital marketing services to promote and publicize safe travel to St. Lucie County. The intent of this campaign is to ensure a safe experience due to the public health emergency. Ads and messaging will include safety precautions to help stop the spread of COVID, along with links to current COVID resources for travel to St. Lucie. The campaign is scheduled to begin as soon as possible and will end on December 30th in order to comply with CARES Act funding requirements. If there's any questions regarding the agenda item, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, may I have approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
So Madam Secretary, Commissioner Hutchinson, Commissioner Zadowski with the second, call the roll, please. Thank you, Charlotte.
Commissioner Bartz.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Both of these items are ratifications of the Public Safety Director's Declaration of Emergency. The first item is for Hurricane Isaiah. It would ratify extensions on October 3rd, October 10th, October 17th, October 24th, and October 31st. The second resolution would ratify the Public Director, Safety Director's Declaration of Extensions for the COVID-19 Emergency, that being October 6th, October 13th, October 20th, and October 27th. Staff recommends approval of both resolutions.
Thank you. Is there any questions? If not, I'll take a motion for item number one.
May I have approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, Commissioner Zadowski, Commissioner Mitchell second, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bartz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Item number two. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, may I have approval?
Second.
Madam Secretary, Commissioner Hutchinson with Commissioner Zadowski second, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bartz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We will go to the Planning and Development, the Traffic Impact Study. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Matthew Grubbs with the Planning Division, presenting this request for a traffic impact study waiver on behalf of the applicant, Igale Zachodin. This is an aerial showing the subject property outlined in red. The subject 14.39 acre property is located on South Ocean Drive in Jensen Beach, approximately one mile north of the Martin County line. Pursuant to Land Development Code Section 1102094A1, whenever submission of a site plan is received for any proposed development on South or North Hutchinson Island, a transportation impact study shall be provided. The Ocean Glass Planned Unit Development Site Plan Project was formerly known as Taylor's Cove, PUD, and was approved in 2006 for the development of 24 dwelling units. A major adjustment has since been filed to adjust the PUD site plan and increase the gross density from 24 units to 29 units with an increase of five dwelling units. Pursuant to Section 110209A4A3 of the Land Development Code, the Board of County Commissioners shall authorize total or partial relief from the requirement of the transportation impact study if it finds that, after receiving the recommendation of the Development Review Committee and based on conditions peculiar to the proposed development, that the information foregone by such relief is not needed to determine the roadway traffic control and access improvements that should be undertaken to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the proposed development. The Development Review Committee has reviewed the presented request for the waiver in conjunction with the major adjustment to the PUD site plan, based on the scope of the proposed adjustment to the previously approved development and the capacity of State Road A1A to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the proposed increase of five dwelling units. Within the development, the preparation of a traffic impact report for review by St. Lucie County is not deemed necessary to assess the project further. The proposed addition of five dwelling units to the project is estimated to increase traffic generation by 37 annual average daily trips and 3:00 PM peak hour trips into the Ocean Glass development. Upon assignment of these 37 additional trips, the level service classification for this segment of South A1A will remain unchanged at a level of service of C. Staff recommends approval of the requested traffic impact study waiver for the proposed site plan adjustment to the Ocean Glass PUD, as the applicant has demonstrated that the additional units will have a de minimis impact of State Road A1A and the associated roadway lengths. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant's representative are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Everybody's quiet, is there a motion?
I don't think you believe, do you have to have one for this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Detective motion.
What am I reading here? I apologize.
Are you making the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I have approval?
So Commissioner Mitchell made the motion, Commissioner Zdowski's second, and Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Barz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, item two.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Wow, look at that, it's like magic.
This is our monthly update to tell you what the Planning and Development Services Department has been up to in the month of October, what we've gotten approved without you having to get involved and wanting to keep you updated. This month, we did a whole lot of stuff, so I'm going to try to move through it quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me. We have some targeted industries come through that we were able to handle administratively, wanted to tell you about those. We have United Teleports moving to an existing site off of Range Line Road. They just needed to do a couple of things to this existing site to make room for them, but we're real excited about them as they are a well-known company, very established, and we're excited that they're expanding here in St. Lucie County. We also have Indian River Spirits, we've been working with this startup business for a while now. They are proposing to build 20,000 square feet of a processing facility to distill local lemons into limoncello, and this is off of Kings Highway. We also have some executive order extensions from the governor that came through. This is a targeted industry, 1.3 million square foot industrial subdivision just north of the jail off of Rock Road. And then we also have the International Airport Business Park, which is about 27,000 square feet of targeted industry potential just south of Treasure Coast International Airport and a gas station. One of the things I forgot to put on here, believe it or not, was Publix. Publix was approved last year by this board up at Emerson and they are coming through for an executive order extension, they, that was approved in October. We also approved the 711 at Kings and Indrio, the minor site plan. Another minor site plan for an ag equipment and service company that's coming into Orange Avenue on the south side, as well as a nutraceuticals company that needed to do some adjustment to its site plan in the Angle Road area. And a temporary use determination to allow hardscapes to relocate to a site off of North US 1 as they go through the rezoning process, you will be, you will be seeing that coming up here soon, but it wasn't going to create any adverse impacts to its neighbors, so we did this in order to allow them to get up and running. We have some residential plans that came through and were approved administratively. We talked last month about the Drottin North Header Canal. This is the northern version and it's a six lot site plan. Let's see, let me make sure I'm right about that. No, it's five, five lot ag subdivision. And then we had two executive order extensions for some PUDs that are close to the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds. For, we have Shin Road, Shin Road Equestrian and also Shin Road 251, they're close to each other just off of Okeechobee Road, for a total of 152 single-family homes that continues that entitlement. We also approved a new minor site plan for a seven lot ag subdivision called Serenity at the Preserve off of Carlton Road out west of town. Then we did a couple of buy right lot splits, one in White City, the other in Indian River Estates. And last but not least, an administrative variance to allow a driveway to extend one foot into the required setback, side setback, so that this property could access their new detached garage. Any questions?
Good stuff.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I just want to thank Leslie, I know we had talked about this one this week, and I'd asked for her to bring these forward each month, so thank you for doing that and it also, I think, highlights how much work we're actually getting through, so thank you.
Yep, no, it's all good stuff.
Thank you for the idea, it was a great one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
You.
That brings us to the announcements. Before I close out, I just want to say, George, thank you for your service. If there's any other men and women here that is staff, I'd like for you to stand and be recognized at this time. Tomorrow's your day, so please stand and be recognized if you've served in the military. So I'm not sure what branch you were in, but I'm sure that those of you in the military know that in 1775, which was eight months prior to the signing of the Declaration of the Independence, that the Second Continental Congress established the Continental Marines and today is their 245th birthday. So to those of you that have served in the Marines, thank you very much, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And to all the veterans out there, I sincerely thank you all for your service and your sacrifice, and I think that all of us up here on this board share the pride that you feel in being a part of, being able to say something that you served in the greatest military in the world. So thank you all for your service. Is there any other comments? If not, Mr. Tipton, you can close us, please.
Madam Chair, could I just tell you one thing?
Absolutely.
Personal privilege, I just want to thank Danny Rutherford. Months ago, I had asked, when you were doing your bathrooms here, that, could they put a changing station? I'm a grandfather and I just want, Danny's not in the audience tonight, but thank you because that means the world to me. That's it.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Tipton?
Madam Chair, again, congratulations to our three commissioners who have been reelected. We look forward to working with you in this next term. County offices will be closed on Veterans Day, which is tomorrow, it is one of the great holidays that we have and I, and I appreciate the board actually closing for that. A number of local governments actually do not do that, so I think it's right and proper and so we appreciate that. The board will be holding a special Port Master Plan meeting on Thursday, November the 12th, that starts at 1:00 here in these chambers, and so it's an opportunity for the public and for the board to weigh in and for the approval of that Port Master Plan, which really shows an exciting future and has been, actually received quite a bit of public input along the way. And then our next regular meeting, which is actually the reorganization meeting, will be on Tuesday, November the 17th.
And Mr. Tipton, for the record, I have had people inquire that the port meeting will be open to the public and they can attend. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll, are you finished? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Is there anyone from the public? Seeing no one, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of October 20th.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, Commissioner Mitchell made the motion and Bart, Commissioner Barz made the second, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Zdowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to today's consent agenda, it's just warrants list, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Zdowski. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Barz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Hutchinson.
Yes, ma'am. Regular agenda, and, and I know Kathy, you've run such a great meeting trying to get us out, but I'm going to take just a few minutes tonight on this one.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
It's important.
And I, it is extremely important, so much so that even Richard Bouchard, who's retired, but spent many, many years of sweat, blood, and tears going through this, I think it was in excess of what, like 18, 19 years, that this process has been going on and it's not finally that we're there, but finally we have paperwork and an agreement in front of us with the Army Corps and South Hutchinson Island residents to move forward with a long awaited, much needed, and much anticipated project. And this is one I will share with Richard and say, this has been the longest 18 years of getting, I've ever seen on a project. But I'm going to turn it over to Josh and let him give everybody the overview of what it is.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Joshua Reeward, now St. Lucie County Erosion District, Senior Coastal Engineer. I'd like to say a few words concerning the agreement provided to you tonight and how vital this agreement is to be executed for the long-term stability of St. Lucie County beaches. As you know, federal beach projects are far and few and far between, there's not very many of them there. It comes with value, so this project sets aside from the local funds, the beach project, the economic importance of what this particular project brings to the county. As you're aware, over 1.1 million or billion dollars of physical taxable asset is adjacent to this beach, so this is a big deal. We need to preserve these areas. Regarding project development, it's apparent that in the last 18 years advocating for this project was challenging but worth it, just like you said, Commissioner Hutchinson. County is now in the final stretches of this project and it couldn't be at a better time, frankly. When we look at the onslaught of storms coupled with the recent value placed on recreational spaces, especially the beaches, we're in a good spot to allow the community to proceed forward and it's worth it now. It's no longer a want, but I consider it a need, so that's a good thing. I also remind the board that the total cost of the 50-year project includes the initial nourishment and two additional re-nourishment events. Initial construction is set for the winter next year into the spring of the following year, so '21, '22, and both the non-federal share of initial construction and the perpetual construction easements that are required for construction are due this summer. A few points I'd like to remind the board and the public, you know, facilitating the execution of this project, the county was able to secure 35% federal participation, which is a very big haul, that amounts to about $8 million for this initial construction project. This county also secured over $6.4 million in state funding and two grants that are associated with this project, so that's another big haul from the county. We also unilaterally increased federal participation by 7% by increasing public beach access on our county parks. At the current cost estimate from the Army Corps, it's about $1.7 million. So that's another big haul. And then the board, of course, approved the South Hutchinson Island Municipal Service taxing unit during the budget process for this next coming year, so all the pieces are in play, we're, we're ready to move forward with those perpetual construction easements, which will be the last part or the last hurdle that we need in order to make the project successful. Considering the 18 years of development towards the project, the Erosion District would like to thank the previous and current board members for participating in this discussion for so long, we're finally at that point where we can execute this. I, I'd like to spend, send a special thanks to Richard Bouchard, who of course queued this up for me in his transition, so that I'm very grateful that he did a lot of the legwork up front. And then with the execution of this, this agreement, the county will be able to move forward in the direction of resiliency, will be able to protect our coastline and provide it as a recreational space for all that live here. I also want to point one thing out, is that this agreement in no way obligates the county to participate in future federal beach nourishment. The agreement outlines the terms of partnership, which we will follow if we move forward and in every instance, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will come to us and ask us to engage in a future project. Typically, local sponsors participate because of the financial incentives, so I, I think we're in a good, good shape moving forward with execution. I'm happy to move that ball forward and do all those things necessary to have a successful project.
Thank you. Madam, can I say a comment, please?
Yes.
Josh, I want to say that I know that Richard has been a champion of all of this, but you stepped into it and you have done a great job filling those shoes, and I know that they were big shoes to fill, but you've done a good job, and I want to say thank you, Franny, because you've really championed.
I trained him.
And you, you have been the one that's been the voice on this board for many years and you never gave up and you fought the fights and you, you were the mama bear and you just saw everything through and you held them accountable and I know that there was a lot of times that you probably were like, ah, but you've always seen it through.
It was worse than that, Kathy. I stormed out of many rooms.
No, I know you did. And so I just want to say thank you, because I, I know the blood, sweat, and tears that you gave and that you've put into this to see this project through and your term of being up here, so.
Thank you.
A lot of this, I think, goes to you, so thank you.
Well, it's, it couldn't have been done without Richard and Josh.
And I agree, but I'm just saying, I want you to take credit because you've been the champion of this.
Well, well, thank you, but it's also been board support over these past 18 years, whether you're on this board or not, and it's been the public, they've really been the driving force down on South Hutch.
But you've been the watchdog to make sure that things went through.
They came behind me. So thank you.
It's not so challenging, but I, I think we're in the right course.
We are, and so thank you, Richard, I appreciate you being here and Josh, thanks for stepping up and doing a good job.
Richard did part of the hard work, now Josh is going to do the rest of the hard work, he's going to actually get it done.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to echo everything that has just been said, because you have been a champion of all champions and, and I was wondering why there was this bright light back there, I didn't know what it was, but it was, it was Richard Bouchard beaming from ear to ear. And, and Josh, you know, it's, actually, I think you're going to probably just get out there and get a bulldozer and just push the material around at this point, but this has been an amazing run and it's very hard and folks at home don't sometimes realize how much work goes into getting something done, it just appears one day, and, and the fact that it has been 18 years and, and Commissioner Hutchinson, Madam Chair, I know that the Army Corps has you on radar, so wherever you go, every Colonel that has ever come through the Army Corps knows Franny Hutchinson, so.
That is, that is true.
All the way to DC. Yep.
So, well, thank you, but is there any questions at this point?
Yeah, any questions you guys have, just in terms of status, once this is executed, we'll be initiating the perpetual easement discussions with the folks down south and hopefully that will prove successful and then we'll be doing all those things that are required for initial construction.
Being positive.
And the nice thing will be that it'll, next year, is if everything goes right.
Yeah, next year this time.
Thank you.
And we're having a party.
I'll invite everyone.
So if there's no more discussion, is there a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
Madam Secretary, Commissioner Townsend with the motion, and seconded by Commissioner Zdowski. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Hutchinson?
With a great deal of pride with that for everybody. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
And if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Call together the Mosquito Control District for Tuesday, November 10th. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend and a second by Commissioner Zdowski. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. On a consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants list 54, 55, 54 through 56, 3 and 4.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski and a second by Commissioner, who is the second?
Townsend.
Townsend. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. And we have the county attorney.
Yes, sir. I think that was, if we could just, clarification of the motion maker was to approve the consent agenda, and that item was on the consent agenda, and that was the intention of the motion maker?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we need any further action.
Okay. There are no regular scheduled, regular agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zdowski. Thank you.
We'll convene as the Environmental Control Board. First item is general public comment. Anyone wishing to address the control board? Seeing a move, we'll come back to the Board. Is there a motion for the approval of minutes of the August 18, 2020?
So moved.
We have a motion. Townsend, second?
So moved.
From Mitchell? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend? Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. There are no items on consent, no regular items. There are motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
But thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
We will come together as the Sustainability District. Public comment. Anybody wishes to address the Board, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public comment.